Yeah, we're supposed to be in the first two rows, so we're third. This guy's just trying to tell us. So to make it as though his people behind him saw it was facing. He's still similar to our, what do you say? Just a little bit, whatever wants to say. And then this one, this is two is they own soul instead of paying for their energy. But if consumers energy was charged fifteen cents. Yes, I thought the guy, uh, pretty much there. Pretty much, yeah.
Those last two, probably.
Yeah, that's. Beginning of the. Well, I am so. I believe in my craft. Just keep her, uh, just for her water.
Without me, I'm probably.
How this needs to be done. It's evening. I want to, Mr. Avanhan, who, which we just called, uh, on the, on the. So, and we're going to play license.
Yeah. Not to the one that. Uh. Your former family. This is the problem. Yeah.
This is.
We're the, um, no. I. Like she was being very weak. So. This is that.
Yeah, yeah.
I think. So are you.
The time.
Oh, you can sometimes.
Yeah.
Probably.
Especially she's rather. The. As far as. I. Yeah. Public. Thank you. So we're still around.
Welcome. I would like to call this meeting of the city commission to order. It is fantastic to see so many people here on this cold night getting to share this warm agenda that we have in front of us here. This is one of the fantastic things we get to do and participate here in the city commission, and we have quite a list of folks to recognize tonight. So we're going to get to it. Uh, Clerk Borling, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Cunningham.
Here.
Commissioner Hess.
Here.
Commissioner Knott.
Here.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Urban.
Here.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Tonight, for our opening ceremony, we will have an invocation by Pastor Lindsay E. Bell, the First United Baptist Church. Everyone, please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Mayor, I'm looking at four minutes on the clock. Is that how long you want the invocation? Okay, well, we'll improvise, we'll improvise. Let us bow. Father in heaven, we thank you and praise you for all things great and small. We thank you for who you are and what you are to us in our lives. We thank you, Father God, for leadership, for you have established all governments, and the heart of the king is in your hand. We thank you for keeping these representatives' hearts in your hands as they make decisions about policies. Help them to remember the love that you placed in their hearts for the people that they serve, and that as they make these decisions, they will have the people on their mind and no personal agenda. We thank you as we celebrate these young people who have done outstanding things. We pray that you would continue to open up doors of opportunity for them. And before we close, we thank you for the memory of one of our great soldiers, Brother Moses Walker, who has gone on before us. We pray that we will continue his legacy and the way that we live, the way that we respond to life circumstances, and that in all that we do, you may be praised and edified. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Commissioners, this evening we are culminating the events that commemorate commemorate the life and legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. And do we have other information here, Clerk Borling, for me? Thank you. As I mentioned before, one of our favorite Martin Luther King responsibilities is that we take time to recognize the youth that contribute to our community, as Dr. King envisioned by way of the Social Justice Youth Awards. This year, we are pleased to present seven deserving individuals with awards tonight provided by our dedicated partners: Consumers Energy, Fifth Third Bank, Life EMS, Shupan &amp; Sons, Dr. Betty and Mr. Dennis, and joining us for the first time, Kalamazoo Nonviolent Opponents of War. Thank you to our partners. I am going to list, I think I'll run through the list here first, and then we'll get to it. Listed in order of award, these are the recipients of the 2020 Social Justice Youth Awards. The Consumers Energy Social Justice Youth Award, Kearney Miller. Fifth Third Social Justice Youth Award, Addie Adonia. Thank you for not putting any phonetics spilling in here, so I'll make my, uh, there we go, there's the version of that. Alexopoulos, hope I got that right. Kalamazoo Nonviolent Opponents of War Social Justice Youth Award, Chloe Carlson, Life EMS Social Justice Youth Award, Daria McCoy, Lodge Dennis Social Justice Youth Award, Erin C. Dickinson, Shupan &amp; Sons Social Justice Youth Award, Chanel Wilson, and the Dr. Louis Walker Social Justice Youth Award, Princess Jamaria Jean Monique Moop. So let's get started. First, Consumers Energy Community Affairs Manager Derek Knotts, who will present our first award. Welcome, Derek.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proud to announce Kearney Miller, the winner of this year's Consumers Energy Social Justice Youth Award. Kearney's commitment to our community is very evident with her leadership addressing important societal issues. We at Consumers Energy were particularly inspired by her work addressing the issue of climate change. Like Kearney, Consumers Energy is committed to addressing the issue. We've recently announced the retirement of our coal fleet, a reduction in carbon emissions by ninety percent, and increased investment in solar and wind technologies, as well as energy efficiency programs. Now, Kearney, as a Kalamazoo Central High School student, has demonstrated her leadership through the Climate Advocates Club of K Central. She was a featured speaker at the 2019 Day of Climate Action in downtown Kalamazoo, a panelist at the Peace Jams Youth Leadership Conference, and presented at the Drawdown Michigan Climate Conference in Grand Rapids. She went further, working to make KPS a U.S. Green Building Council Green District. Energy efficiency, we love it, we love it. Make no mistake, her work on climate change is certainly viewed through the lens of social justice, looking out for those disproportionately affected by climate change. It's very reassuring to have leaders of the future like Kearney taking steps to address these important issues. I have one challenge, however. Wherever your path may lead, we hope you stay or return to Kalamazoo, because we need leaders like you. Nominated by teacher and advisor Josh Gottlieb from Kalamazoo Central High School, I'm proud to have Kearney Miller represent Consumers Energy as this year's Social Justice Youth Award recipient.
Thank you. Just so you know, if you would like to make remarks after receiving your award, you're welcome to do that. You're good. Thank you, Derek. And congratulations, Kearney. Next, please welcome Community President of Fifth Third Bank, Ronald For.
And thank you, Mayor. Adonia Alexopoulos, or Addie, often goes above and beyond in her volunteer efforts. While most students are asked to volunteer at least fifteen hours per trimester within the National Honor Society at Loy Norx, Addie easily triples that requirement. Addie is extremely active with a recycling program at the high school, along with the Edison Literacy Project, clothing and food drives, and pumpkin painting parties, with the target of brightening the day of children in the hospital. Fifth Third Bank was also impressed with the efforts that Addie has undertaken to teach robotics to younger girls to encourage female participation in STEM-related fields. Through her leadership role within Girl Scouts Heart of Michigan, Addie has been able to provide a personal example to these young girls that they might have opportunities to succeed in areas that they might not have thought possible. Addie certainly embraces diversity within her sphere of influence and demonstrates that through her involvement in the Loy Norx Peace Jam Initiative and her personal commitment to aid Syrian refugees as they adjusted to a new culture. Nominated by Loy Norx Principal Christopher Aguenaga, I am proud to present this year's Fifth Third Bank Social Justice Youth Award to Adonia Alexopoulos.
Ms. Alexopoulos.
Um, I guess I'd just like to say thank you for this honor, and then I also wanted to thank Ms. May. She is the coordinator of Peace Jam at my school, and she just really helped me discover my passion for volunteering, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Next, we move to the Kalamazoo Nonviolent Opponents of War Social Justice Youth Award, and welcome the presenters of this award, Ron Kramer and Josh Gottlieb.
Thank you, Mayor. Kalamazoo Nonviolent Opponents of War, which made the climate crisis a central focus of our work in 2019, and will continue to do that in the current year, is pleased to nominate Chloe Carlson from Kalamazoo Central High for a 2020 Social Justice Youth Award. To tell you more about why Chloe richly deserves this award is her teacher from Kalamazoo Center, who also independently nominated her, Josh Gottlieb.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Mayor. Chloe is working to address the urgent problem of climate change within our school and the larger community. She's a leading member of the Kalamazoo Central Climate Advocates Club, a founding member, and the Kalamazoo Climate Crisis Coalition. She was the co-program chair of and featured speaker at the KCCC September twentieth Day of Climate Action in downtown Kalamazoo. Chloe has spoken before to this body and the Kalamazoo County Commission about the need to declare a climate emergency. She presented at the Drawdown Michigan Climate Conference in Grand Rapids this past fall. Chloe's been instrumental in developing a partnership between Kalamazoo Public Schools, Consumers Energy, and the U.S. Green Building Council to turn KPS into a green district. Consumers is currently benchmarking every building in the district, and then they and the U.S. Green Building Council will mentor KPS students as they analyze the data and make recommendations to the Board of Education for ways that KPS can reduce its carbon footprint while saving money to invest in other programs to serve students. Chloe also helped the Kalamazoo Central Climate Advocates craft a resolution declaring a climate emergency, and we were the first high school in the state to do so. KCHS is the first high school in Michigan to have crafted that resolution. Chloe's taken the lead on a climate change project that started at school but has spread through the community. She now sits on the Leadership Committee for a group which includes members from three colleges or universities, Citizens Climate Lobby, Extinction Rebellion, and Sierra Club. She's been featured on national public radio. She's organizing other students to advocate for the future they deserve by demanding action on climate change today. In addition to the actions described above, Chloe's also participated in the following activities to promote equal access, opportunity, and social justice. She's participated in climate change presentation at El Sol Elementary School, food drives, fun runs, marathons, blood drives, and link crew. Ron?
To sum up, Chloe Carlson is a strong climate and social justice leader in the Kalamazoo community. She has made a commitment to bettering this community, has demonstrated great leadership skills, and her climate justice work embraces diversity. Kalamazoo Nonviolent Opponents of War is honored to award or to support Chloe Carlson for a 2020 Social Justice Youth Award.
Yeah, I'm, hi. I would just like to say thank you. This is like an amazing honor. Um, Kalamazoo's always been my home. It always will be my home, no matter where I go, and I really couldn't have done any of this without everybody in the room here tonight, so thank you.
Thank, thank you so much, and thank you, Ron and Josh. Please join me as we welcome the Director of Self-Operations for Life EMS, John Pinkster. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor. Daria McCoy is a compassionate young leader with a strong desire to help others through her involvement in the medical field. Particularly interested in those, insisting those with physical and mental disabilities, she has participated in the WMU Pipeline Program, as well as the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer Walk, and Light the Night Walk for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Foundation. Daria has a passion for health awareness and works continuously to encourage all people to live healthier and more sustainable lives. Daria celebrates diversity and equality within our culture and in our community, feeling that all people deserve equal rights regardless of their lifestyle choices. This point was well-supported by Daria when she stated, "It doesn't matter what color people are or what their orientation is. They have a heart, so I am going to love and respect them like I want to be." What a quote. Living by this golden rule, Daria is driven by love, speaking out to things she views as unfair. She is quick to ask questions and eager to find solutions to the problems of others. A natural giver, Daria will find a means to make sure all are welcome and included in her day-to-day activities. Daria fills her time with involvement in programs such as the American Red Cross Stocking Drive, Girls on the Run, March of Dimes Bread Lift, MLK Day of Service, Homeless Shelter Food Distribution, Kalamazoo Black Arts Festival, Salvation Army, Toys for Tots, and the Boys and Girls Club of America, just to name a few. Nominated by Davina Gardner, who serves as both coach and mentor, I have the privilege of presenting this year's Life EMS Social Justice Youth Award to Daria McCoy. Congratulations.
Um, I just want to thank EMS for giving me this award, and I also want to thank my coach for nominating me. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you, John and Life EMS. Please welcome Dr. and Mr. Tony Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Inspired by the love we have for our children, Amani, Amir, and Tony, all who attended Kalamazoo Public Schools, and the love we have for the city of Kalamazoo, my wife and I were moved to give a scholarship through the City of Kalamazoo Louis Walker Scholarship. This year, we are extremely pleased to present the Lodge Dennis Scholarship to Erin C. Dickinson, Jr. Erin is committed to serving others. He has given back through his service with the Gospel Mission, Kalamazoo YMCA, Kalamazoo Black Arts Festival, CAPS Leader, Flint Water Drive, peer mentor and tutor, Goodwill, the American Heart Foundations, and Heart and Breast Cancer Walks. Through his volunteer work, he is able to embrace the diversity of everyone around him and acknowledge the importance of valuing differences. He definitely influences his peers by being a leader who wants to help others around him be the best that they can be while making sure everyone is treated equally. He is a leader both academically and athletically. He is a member of the Kalamazoo Central National Honor Society and team captain of the track and field team. He is a four-time national qualifier for AAU Junior Olympics. He is nationally ranked and holds several school records. Erin, you have truly done a remarkable job, and we are proud of your outstanding accomplishments. Keep that same love, compassion, work, and work ethic, and it may take you far in life. Nominated by Ms. Sadie Miles, we are pleased to present the Lodge Dennis Social Justice Youth Award to Erin C. Dickinson, Jr.
Um, I would like to say that I'm very thankful and honored to get this award, and I would like to thank my parents and my family, close friends, and Ms. Sadie Miles for nominating me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank, and thank you, Dr. Betty and Mr. Tony Dennis. Next, please welcome Judy Woolsey, Assistant to the CEO of Shupan &amp; Sons, who will present the next award tonight. Welcome, Judy.
Okay, let's get this where it should be. Good evening, Council. We're so happy to be here today. Mark Shupan would have liked to have attended and handed out this award to Chanel Wilson, but he's always traveling over the state. There's a conference, so I am excited to always be able to come in his stead. Um, we read and write a lot of bios in our industry. Mostly, they're at the C level, CIO, CFO, CEO, even presidents. I'm not going to say that this year's recipient of the Shupan &amp; Sons Social Justice Youth Award has a better bio than executives three times her age, but she kind of does. Nominated by Artrella Cohn, let me introduce Chanel Wilson. From her bio, I read that she demonstrates leadership. She heads the Financial Department of DECA at Loy Norx High School, and she won the state championship for leadership and teamwork. She's an executive board member at Loy Norx and a youth leader in her church. I also read how she embraces diversity by challenging stereotypes and creates spaces for minority youth to engage in activities that historically few people of color have participated in. She engages in conferences and training. She increases her understanding and appreciation of different cultural backgrounds because she wants to be a good advocate for all people. She's the only minority teenager that served on the steerage committee for the Women's Race 2020, which happened last Saturday. This mission, it was to march and eliminate racism, empower women, stand up for social justice, help families, and strengthen communities. I think Kalamazoo is very fortunate to have an advocate like Chanel in our community. On behalf of Shupan &amp; Sons, I would like to award to you the Social Justice Youth Award for 2020. Thank you.
Um, I would like to thank God for blessing me with this special opportunity in my life. Secondly, I would like to thank each and every person in this room that came to support somebody today, especially my mother and all that she has done for me in my life. Thirdly, I would like to thank Shupan &amp; Sons, as well as Ms. Artrella, for nominating me and presenting me with this honorable. and presenting me with this honorable certificate and award. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy and Shupan &amp; Sons. Tonight, we're honored to have Dr. Lewis Walker here to present the City of Kalamazoo's award named in recognition of Dr. Walker's work in social justice in Kalamazoo. The Dr. Lewis Walker Social Justice Youth Award. Please help me welcome Dr. Walker.
Mr. Mayor, I'm always happy to come to this chamber to recognize our young people who have distinguished themselves in the community. And I would just like to say thank you for your work in recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King, a man I had the honor of marching with through Mississippi, a march against fear. But I'm also very proud to come and say a word or two about one of our youth who has distinguished herself in our community, and this person is Princess Mup, a junior in our high school, Loy Norix. This young woman is a great example of putting Dr. Martin Luther King's vision into action. As a member of the Kalamazoo Area Math and Science Center, Princess organized, created, and led the multicultural student organization. It was created to encourage minority students to embrace and show pride in their culture and to give the general student body an avenue to discuss intercultural and interracial issues through understanding, respect, acceptance, and appreciation. As a leader, Princess has facilitated discussion in her school about diversity and inclusion and is an excellent advocate for change within her peer group. She is quoted as saying, and I read this, and I reread it, and I reread it, I said, "This is really profound. I'll share with you." She said, "We all become better human beings as well as more educated and wiser when we experience different cultures. With education comes power, and since knowledge accompanies diversity, diversity is power." That's profound. Princess has participated in many activities, among them, my lead program, the Blue Lake International Tour Scholarship Program for Diversity, and the recruitment of middle school students to KAMSC. Nominated by Kalamazoo Loy Norix English Teacher, Tisha Pankop, whom I had an opportunity to speak before coming here to this chamber, and she had nothing but glowing remarks about Princess. You are truly remarkable. But anyway, I'm happy to present this year's Dr. Lewis Walker Social Justice Youth Award to Princess Mup. Give me a nod.
I would just like to say, first of all, thank you for all the support, all the unconditional support I've gotten from my family members, from my English teacher who I've only known for one trimester. She has supported me from day one until now, and I'm extremely grateful for that. I'm extremely grateful for all the wonderful people in this room who made this opportunity available for me, who opened up the doors to help me continue and further my route, to change this world into a society in which people can live in their own skin and feel like they have a right to practice who they are all the time, no matter where they are, who they're around. I think that we can become a society that embraces all cultures and all races, and I will be one of the people who activates and initiates the change into an accepting society. Thank you.
Am I right? All recipients will receive a certificate, a cash award, and a one-year membership to the NAACP. Please join me in congratulating all our recipients once again. As a special benefit tonight, the recipients will not have to stay around for the rest of the City Commission meeting unless they so desire. Not that there aren't a great deal of interesting things on our agenda coming forward here. Thank you once again. Thank you to the supporters. See you again soon. You will not be disappointed. And the first thing I want to do is introduce a proclamation, which will be read tonight by Vice Mayor Patrice Griffin, and I will go down front with the proclamation. Patrice, are there people here you'd like to invite up?
Yes, if we could invite Sarah Lee from the Kalamazoo County Community, Kalamazoo Community Foundation. And I'm really excited to read this proclamation. It's very fitting on today being the National Day of Racial Healing, the fourth annual, for those of you who don't know. It started back in 2017 by about 550 leaders throughout the United States coming together to really get involved in healing, racial healing, which is about celebrating our differences and finding that common humanity. So, whereas we have all witnessed racialized oppression and division rising in America's urban, rural, suburban, and tribal communities today that threatens the very core of this great country's unity, and whereas, just like those who came before us, it is our duty to protect the children of this country and to maintain communities in which they may all be given the opportunity to succeed. And whereas, we understand and recognize that there is a racial divide in our country, and we must all work earnestly to heal the wounds created by racial, ethnic, and religious bias and build an equitable and just society so that all children can thrive. And whereas, children have the right to be provided every opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive in nurturing environments that don't violate their safety, dignity, and humanity. And whereas, every single person has the capability to make a single, excuse me, a simple change within him or herself that can have a profound effect on the entire society. And whereas, if we all dedicate ourselves to the principles of truth, racial healing, and transformation, we can all bring about the necessary changes in thinking and behavior that will propel this great country forward as a unified force where racial biases will become a thing of the past. And whereas, racial healing is a vital and crucial commitment to the education, social, and mental, and overall well-being of all of our children. And whereas, the City of Kalamazoo, in conjunction with truth, racial healing, and transformation Kalamazoo, along with others throughout the United States of America, acknowledges January 21st, 2020, as the National Day of Racial Healing, and urges all citizens to promote racial healing and transformation in the ways that are best suited for them individually as a means to work together and ensure the best quality of life for every child. Now, therefore, on behalf of the 53rd City Commission and Mayor David Anderson, the City of Kalamazoo hereby proclaim that this city honors and recognizes January 21st, 2020, as the National Day of Racial Healing.
Thank you so much for this acknowledgement. This gives us the space and the acknowledgement of healing is important practice to bring our communities together. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You say we need photos.
The next item we have is the adoption of the formal agenda. Commissioner Pradel, did you have a comment you wanted to make before? Attorney Robinson, do you want to?
I believe the clerk pointed out a communication from Commissioner Pradel about a change in the minutes that he noticed, and the clerk and I discussed earlier this afternoon that perhaps the easiest way to do that, rather than pulling one set of minutes off of the consent agenda for special attention, would be for Commissioner Pradel to call attention to the change and then for the mayor to ask if anybody has any objection to it and incorporate that change as part of the consent agenda.
Yeah, the adjustment was just basically acknowledging that in the remarks for the December 16th meeting, I was just acknowledging how awesome it was that Mayor, Vice Mayor, the commission was very thoughtful about reaching out to different groups as related to the JAG awards. It wasn't related to the refugee resettlement, but so that was.
Okay, sorry, I caught you off guard on that one there.
No, no, no.
Okay, all right. So, does anybody have any objection with that correction in the minutes that will be proven on our consent agenda?
Right.
If not, then we'll just be moving forward here. So, no objections, then are there any other changes? Do we have to, let me see here, any action we need to take on this then? No? Okay, so we're good for that. Next on our agenda, we are moving down to the calendar of upcoming meetings. Anything special on communications?
Not tonight.
Okay, we'll get to that. Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to pull an item from Section F, which is our consent agenda? If you want to speak about that item in particular, you need to ask for it to be moved to the regular agenda. See, no one, commissioners, anyone like to pull an item from our consent agenda? All right. See, no one. Next is the consent agenda, Deputy City Manager Lamb.
First one, adoption of a resolution replacing Resolution 1165, assigning a payment in lieu of taxes to Apple Ridge 2 MHT Limited Dividend Housing Association, LLC, for Apple Ridge Apartments at 2301 Flower Street, and extending the pilot 14 years pursuant to Section 354 of the Kalamazoo City Code. Approval of the mayor's appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. The appointment of Jeremy Berg to the Historic District Commission for a term expiring on January 1st, 2023. The appointment of John Mitchell to the Historic District Commission for a term expiring on January 1, 2023. The reappointment of Regina Gorham to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term expiring on March 31st, 2023. The appointment of Tim Hills to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term expiring on March 31st, 2022. The reappointment of Joshua Koenig to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term expiring on March 31st, 2023. The appointment of Lanay Powell-Wilson to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term expiring on March 31st, 2022. The reappointment of Beth Timmerman to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term expiring on March 31st, 2023. Appointment of a reappointment of Donna Keller to the Board of Review for Assessments for a term expiring on January 31st, 2023. Included with this recommendation is a request to waive City Commission Rule 12E regarding term limits. Approval of the minutes from the City Commission meetings on November 11th, November 18th, December 2nd, December 9th, and December 16th, 2019, and January 6th, 2020.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager Lamb. Commissioners, the requested action is to approve items 1 through 4 and authorize the city manager to sign all documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Cunningham.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Urban. Clerk Borleam, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Items on the consent agenda are approved. Next are items on the regular agenda, Deputy City Manager.
First item, G1, approval of a grant agreement between the Stryker-Johnson Foundation and City of Kalamazoo for $28,212,628 to support aspirational projects for the mission of the Foundation for Excellence from 2020 through 2022 fiscal years. I'd like to ask Steve Brown to come forward, FFE Coordinator and Resource Specialist, to provide you a little bit of background on this item.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Griffin, commissioners. Thank you, Deputy City Manager Lamb. The motion you have before you this evening is, as you heard, for the approval of a grant agreement for $28.2 million from the Stryker-Johnson Family Foundation to the City of Kalamazoo in support of the mission of the Foundation for Excellence, which is to support the goals of the city, to fund aspirational projects, and to empower all of our residents to live the lives that they feel that they and their families deserve. It's a really momentous opportunity. It complements a grant that was approved October 7th of last year for an extension of another grant that supports the budget stabilization and tax reduction portions of our agreement with the Stryker-Johnson Family Foundation. One thing I'd like to point out is that this is a multi-year agreement, so it goes until 12/31 of 2022, so it gives a really maximal amount of stability in this year, the following year, and then the following year for aspirational projects. We have $8.2 million in this year's budget proposal that's included in this grant, and then we'd be at the level of $10 million per fiscal year in the next two years as well. It's, as I said, a fantastic opportunity to support the goals of the city. The goals of the city are the Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 Strategic Vision Goals and the elements of the Master Plan. So, everything that's happening under this is a continuation of the positive relationship and positive work that we've been building over the past several years and that we hope to continue really into the future in perpetuity. What I'd add to this is just really a tremendous gratitude to the staff of the city who do the work, day in and day out. I've said this before. I've said this before and I can't really say it enough. I mean, we don't always get a chance eye to eye to see each other. There's 650 staff members of the city, but everybody's really carrying their weight in this and it's a deep gratitude that we feel for getting the projects done in parks and public services all throughout the city and to the Stryker Johnson Family Foundation. It's a depth of generosity and a breadth of vision really that we see from the Stryker Johnson Family Foundation and their commitment to the city in the form of the Foundation for Excellence, the people of the city, the residents of the city, the future of the city. You really can't say enough. It's just constantly, every day, it really blows me away what we have the honor to work on. So that's the motion before you this evening. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, commissioners? Thank you, Steve Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item? If so, please come to the podium, give your name and whether you live in the city. You'll have four minutes to make your comments. See, no one. Commissioners, the recommended action is to approve the agreement and direct the city manager to sign all related documents. Is there a motion?
Support.
Made by Commissioner Knott, supported by Commissioner Cunningham. Any discussion? See, no discussion. I guess I want to mention something quickly here. For anyone who hasn't had a chance to see it, a report came out from the Foundation for Excellence in fall of 2019. There are some copies of that report laying on the ledge here. This is what it looks like. Take an opportunity to look through this. This is the good work that's getting done through the work of the Foundation for Excellence and more great work to come. Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Knott.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Urban.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Borling. The motion passes. Next item, please.
Adoption of a resolution approving and adopting the annual appropriation for the year 2020, setting forth a number of mills to be levied, approved an interim appropriation for the year 2021, and establishing policies for the administration of the budget. There are several items underneath I'm going to read through and then I'd like to ask Andrew Hahn and Jennifer Delannick to come forward to provide us a little bit of background on the Kalamazoo Downtown Partnership and their role in this. A, approval of the proposed 2020 Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Budget as submitted by the BRA Board. Approval of the proposed 2020 Economic Development Corporation Budget as submitted by the EDC Board. Approval of the 2020 Downtown Development Authority Operating Budget and the existing 2-mill DDA tax levy. Approval of the 2020 Downtown Economic Growth Authority Operating Budget. Approval of the proposed 2020 Fee Schedule for the Kalamazoo Municipal Golf Association. Approval of a resolution approving the 2020 fees for various permits, hearings within the Community Planning Economic Development Department. An adoption of a resolution to establish the Department of Parks and Recreation fees and charges for 2020. With that, I'd like to ask Andrew and Jennifer to come up. Jennifer is the COO of Kalamazoo Downtown Partnership and Andrew is the president. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. I want to point out that it was just little over a year ago that we were up here talking about the establishment of the Downtown Economic Growth Authority, and it's so exciting to be back here after such a short time to report back on some of the growth and great things that have been happening with the authority and also talk about what we're doing next year, this year I should say, at the partnership. And I want to thank Jennifer for joining us, for joining me up here. You should have all received an extra document on the podium there. That was not included in the packet that went out to the general public and was on the website. I do want to point out that that is on the downtown website, and if anyone in the public is interested, that is, can be found under the Downtown Development Authority section in the November packet. So what you have there is our combined budget. So the two that you're actually approving as part of this resolution are the budgets for the Downtown Development Authority and for the Downtown Economic Growth Authority, and they're pretty short and concise. We've switched to a format where we share all of our boards, this joint budget, that actually shows everything that happens that we're doing. And it's, we like to think it's a little easier to wrap your head around and transparent so that you understand that when you're signing off on this service agreement and the staffing and those sorts of things, you get where that's actually going and what's going to happen. So I've got a few slides I want to run through here. So I heard five minutes and I heard two and a half minutes, and I'll try and not exceed the longer one of those. A few things I wanted to point out about the budget, just some general items and changes. So our TIF plan, which is a 30-year plan that was signed into action by all of you last year, has started to grow. So we have $58,000 that was collected through the TIF plan this year. That will grow every year and within just a few short years rises to a much more sustainable level where it can come close to supporting the majority of the work that we do, but we feel really honored to have this. I wanted to point out also that the state support, which is through the qualified development area provision within the new TIF plan, we're the first community to have that, the only community so far, and that will, that will continue to grow exponentially year on year as well. Another item that I wanted to point out from our overall budget is to help you all understand that we don't just rely on the municipal funding for this work we do. Between sponsorships, grants, contributions, and other opportunities from 30-plus organizations, individuals, institutions, et cetera, we've leveraged a total of $402,000 of additional monies into the work that we do to support downtown and its continued growth. A little bit as well about the budget approval process and the development. So you'll all remember that we created, we really revamped our whole downtown leadership network last year, and the goal was to be more diverse and representative of our community. We did that through offering up an opportunity to the community to come in and inform our work in our four citizen coalitions around the areas of people, place, experience, and growth. And we had an overwhelming response in our first year. We've got over 76 individuals. It actually helped drive the, drive the development of this budget. So it's not just our team sitting in a, you know, sitting in our office thinking up what we can do. We're actually engaging with the community at, I think, a pretty deep level in this. So, you know, we worked with them each to identify the challenges and opportunities in those respective areas that they're working on, looked at what national best practices were, and did a lot of brainstorming on what we could do to advance these, these opportunities and challenges. And then we got that into an actual realistic budget, and that's where we bring in our boards to this work. So when we do the actual approvals of the budget, those are presented at the public bodies first and then to the Downtown Partnership Board after that. And we have really great representation on those boards. 31 members in the combined boards that represent downtown business, residents, institutions, a number of other different stakeholder groups. And I think it's really critical to note too that included in those groups, all of the bodies that are actually helping to support the growth of the TIF through their contributions, Metro Transit, Kalamazoo Public Library, the city, the county, and the Community College are all represented in helping us make those decisions on how to invest. So, and we're happy to take questions at any, any point through this. Jennifer and I are each going to speak, kind of pass the, the mic back and forth on the four different impact areas. So I will hand it off to Jennifer to talk about our experience area.
So like Andrew mentioned, we have four areas of impact that we, we want to have an impact on as we think about the programs and services we want to provide for downtown. So one of those areas is experience, and we think this is how, how people engage with the downtown. So we categorize this as events, public art, promotions. And so for 2020, with the great input of our coalition members, we've identified our calendar here, and I want to highlight just a few of the events. I also want to start by saying that in regards to events, our, our organization plans a series of events every year, and, and we have two goals in this, and I think the first goal is really to support downtown businesses. So we want to generate foot traffic downtown. We want people to have a reason to come downtown. But the second reason is to create a downtown that serves everyone. So, so in that, we want everybody to feel welcome downtown, and we want to create events and offerings that are going to apply to all different people of different ages, races, socioeconomic statuses. So that's really our goal as we put this calendar together. So again, I want to highlight just a few on these lists. So number one, I'll pull out Workout Wednesdays. This was a new event that we created last year. We got 12 or a dozen, a dozen different businesses to come down and provide a free workout class on Wednesdays downtown, which we thought was a great community benefit. We also initiated Beats on Bates, which is a weekly music series along Bates Alley to support some of the restaurants along that alleyway and, and generally the downtown. So those are two events that we're bringing, event series we're bringing back next year. If any of you saw the skeletons downtown in October, that was our event. We coordinated that with the help of a contractor, and so we're going to bring those skeletons back. It was a great event. We had 35 different businesses sponsor skeletons downtown, so we hope to grow that in future and, and create a great reason for families to come downtown for, to, to see the skeletons and interact with the different, different sponsored skeletons in the downtown area. And that will start with our launch event, which was really targeted at families, and so it provide a series of, of events for kids, and we had more than 1,000 people show up specifically for that event on that Saturday. So moving down the list, we're also going to continue our holiday event series. So this year, we had the Holiday Parades. That's an annual parade that our organization coordinates and sponsors, so we're going to continue that work, and that kicks off our holiday season. We're going to move into, or move into Santa's Workshop. So following the holiday parade, we start with Santa's Workshop, the Holly Jolly Trolley or moves people around downtown. And this year, we were very happy to have Sunday's feature of Black Santa for children to come visit somebody who represents, represents their demographic on Sunday. So, so we'll continue that next year, and then we also do a series of campaigns for Small Misses Saturday to encourage people to shop small, and then generally throughout the year, market and promote downtown, the downtown businesses and what's happening downtown. So that's all on the calendar for 2020 and into addition to the other, in addition to the other events you see up there, and I'm happy to answer questions on any of those.
Thank you so much, Andrew and Jennifer. Any questions from commission?
We have a couple more slides.
Oh, you do?
We do, yes.
Jumping.
Not so fast, Dave. Not so fast. Time out.
Sure.
I do have, I just have one. What is the ridership of the Holly Jolly Trolley? Is that well attended? And when are the, the biggest times for people to ride?
So the Holly Jolly Trolley runs, I think I'm saying this right, and as to our events coordinator would know best, but it runs Thursday through Saturday through most of the holiday season, and then we have a couple special days. We actually don't know the exact numbers of the ridership, but it's something we'd like to track in future. The report that we get back from BMW Charters, who, who actually conducts that or drives the trolley around for us, is that the trolley is full. So, so they say there's a lot of activity, there's a lot of ridership. We actually brought the Holly, or the Holly Jolly Trolley became the Trolley of Terror for Skeletour, and we, I know we had lines all day, you know, lined up on, on the launch day to, to ride that. So, so we hear that it's busy, but in the future, we'd like to better track some of the ridership to get a better sense for who's using it at what hours.
One year from now, stay tuned for data, hard data on that. So I'm going to talk a little bit about people, and this is one of our initiatives, one of the initiatives within this category is one that I'm really incredibly excited about. So just the sampling of some of the stuff that we're going to be doing this year, we're working with Public Safety on hosting a series, a regular series of downtown open houses where we can actually, downtown businesses and residents and visitors can engage with public safety and with our organization in a very relaxed atmosphere. It's kind of built on a model that's a national model called Coffee with a Cop, and we're probably going to call it something different here. But the idea is to kind of move this around to different venues throughout downtown. It's very casual. We'll have several representatives from Public Safety and a couple folks from our office to kind of hear what some of those challenges are, what the opportunities are, what people are concerned with downtown, and let them do it in a, in an open and welcoming and comfortable environment. So we're excited about that. We are also in the process of authoring a major community perception survey, so we really feel like making sure that people feel that downtown is safe, clean, and well-programmed is really critical to our work. And we know what, we can track what we're doing, but the, that perception is so important as well. So we're crafting this survey that will be distributed not just to, you know, a small slice or, you know, kind of our normal, our normal set of stakeholders, but we want to get this out and, and do it in a very scientific way where it would be out, we can track the differences of perception from folks maybe that live in the city, that live in the metro, that live in the region, that work down here, live down here, et cetera. And then the one that I'm the most excited about here in this people category is the Downtown Ambassador Program. So as we've started to get more engaged with some of our peer communities throughout the country, you know, they're all, they're all kind of organized differently. They have a different set of priorities, a different plan that they're following, but the one common thread that we found is they have a really, really strong focus on clean and safe initiatives, and that kind of gets back to that perception thing. And what that, what we envision that looking like here is mid-year this year, we'll be actually launching a Downtown Ambassador Program. If you've been to downtown Detroit or South Bend or Grand Rapids, kind of the three nearest ones, these are full-time living wage jobs. People would be out every single day picking up trash, removing graffiti, doing plantings, helping be kind of a friendly guide for, for visitors downtown, helping them get to their location, asking them if they need anything, and serving as an extra set of eyes and ears for public safety as well. So we're, we're very excited. Stay tuned for that. We're, we're targeting June or July for that and want to figure out, we've been talking with our partners at the city. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the budget last minute, but we're really excited. We have a number of community organizations that are helping support that. Metro Transit, City, Consumers Energy Foundation, Irving S. Gilmore Foundation, Discover Kalamazoo, a true community effort around that. And then I will hand it back to Jennifer unless there's questions on any of those three items.
So moving into growth, I'll go over a few initiatives that we're planning in the area of growth. So to start, developing a retail plan, so by this, we really mean assessing the current retail mix and then identifying gaps in the market to better inform how we're shaping our downtown and the offerings downtown going forward. Closely related to that would be the building out the real estate data on website, on our website. So this would be both a listing of existing businesses and attractions downtown, but also identifying available commercial retail spaces to help bring in new tenants into those vacant spaces downtown in addition to a number of other factors or tools that we will have on the website. Closely related to that is developing an incentive toolbox. That's kind of what we're calling it. So figuring out how are we supporting existing businesses downtown? What kind of grant programs should we have to support existing businesses, sign grants, facades, et cetera? But also looking at what kind of incentives do we have to offer to new businesses wanting to open up downtown? So working with our coalition members to explore some of those. As part of this, we've been given a specific directive to identify incentives specifically targeted for minority and women-owned businesses. So part of that will be included in that overall bullet point. Additionally, we are looking to expand pop-up opportunities downtown to fill existing spaces. This holiday season, our pop-ups brought almost 9,000 people or visitors downtown, and so we want to continue that trend and also continue to provide opportunities for emerging entrepreneurs to test the market downtown. And again, specific targets at minority and women-owned businesses, so giving that group a chance to, to offer their products downtown. And lastly, on that list is growing our Downtown Dollars program, so this is a great way to encourage local spending, and we can go into the details of that if folks are interested in it, but we'd like to continue to grow this program. It's something that's been around for a long time, and we've, we've moved it to an electronic system, so we're going to look to continue to do that in 2020.
Last switch. I want to talk real briefly about place as that is one of the more visible impacts that we have. So I'm sure that many of you have seen some of the stories about the Arcadia Creek Festival Place, whether that was a week ago, three years ago, or five years ago. It's something that's very near and dear to the community, and we know that it's not performing as, as well as it could right now. So our, our team in, with the help of our Coalition for Place has spent many, many, many hours over the last few weeks vetting 10 proposals that we received and actually interviewing four firms that are going to help us marry what those national best practices are for, you know, world-class public spaces with the market realities here in Kalamazoo, and then that public input around what the next phase of growth could be for that. So we're actually going to be selecting the firm here in the next day or so and notifying So we're actually going to be selecting the firm here in the next day or so and notifying them and then in a few weeks or a month or so, we'll actually probably roll out what that public engagement process will look like. It will follow the city's public engagement plan, so I would anticipate opportunities both for open houses, design charrettes, surveys, et cetera. Again, very excited about that. In conjunction with the work that Director Kick, or Directors Kick and Baker are doing and City Planner Anderson to rethink our downtown street network, we know that that's going to be, that is moving forward and will be brought forth to the community in the coming months. And a lot of those things that are revealed are going to be, you know, five-year horizon are going to be very challenging and big picture things. We know that there are improvements that can be made this year to improve safety and access for people downtown. So we're going to work with Public Services and our Coalition for Place on, the example I show there is a very low-cost intervention to an intersection that actually narrows it, makes it safer. So looking at making some modest investments in some of those types of things as well. And then we're also going to continue our alley activation work. I trust most of you are familiar with Bates Alley. We're going to take the work that we've done there and that momentum and actually bring that across Portage Street next to the stamped Robin, between there, back to where Exchange Place and Farmer's Alley is and then on to the mall. That will not be a closure to traffic the way that Bates is, there won't be permanent decks built, but we've worked with a work group from our Coalition for Place and have three different designers from some of the firms here in town working with us to come up with ideas for three-dimensional art, two-dimensional art and lighting installations that we can do there that'll, you know, really be a compelling thing where someone walking down the mall was just kind of intuitively seeing this alley and wanting to go into it. And, you know, who knows, perhaps during Art Hop, you know, we could close it for a couple of hours to do something really neat. But that is just a small sampling and I know that was way more than five minutes, but thank you for your patience and listening to that and we're certainly happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thanks again, appreciate it. Thanks for your great work. Any questions? Thanks again. So is there anyone in the audience who'd like to comment on this item? So I want to remind you, we've been through a long presentation here, this is item G2 and the item I'm talking about is a big one. It is basically to adopt our annual appropriation, our city budget, as well as approve the component unit budgets and fee schedules. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this, please come down to the podium, you'll have four minutes, please give your name and whether you live in the city. Seen no one. Commissioners, the recommended action is to adopt the annual appropriation resolution for the city of Kalamazoo and approve the component and unit budgets and fee schedules. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Support.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess, supported by Commissioner Pradel. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Pradel?
Yeah, just wanted to thank city staff again for all their work on this year's budget, keeping us apprised of changes and summaries and the work session that we had, I know that there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into that, so we're very appreciative of all that work, so just wanted to share that. You know, there's some pretty exciting things and, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Anyone else? All right, seen no one else. I am going to make a couple of quick comments here and that is that, just reminding people, we did have a very nice presentation about our downtown activities that are part of our Dega and DDA downtown, but the action we're taking tonight is approving our, all of our budget here for the city of Kalamazoo for 2020. And I just want to make a couple of very quick mentions here is that, you know, there has been a little bit of discussion about the fact that we did approve a budget in 2019, had some amendments during the year, but that budget in, that we approved for 2019, the total adopted budget was about one hundred and eighty-two million. And the budget for the city of Kalamazoo that we're adopting tonight is about two hundred and two million, so there's been some discussion, what's the change, why so much? And I just want to call that out for a moment. Our city budget includes a couple of categories. One of them is kind of the general governmental, what we call our general fund budget, that sort of thing. It also includes what's described as our enterprise funds and those include water and wastewater and those funds are separated from each other in that we cannot charge and try to make some money on our water bills and push that profit or excess into our general fund. Those are separate funds. So when you look at our budgets, comparing them, and if you look at the general governmental budget that we adopted, not including those enterprise funds in 2019, it is virtually the same number, one hundred and twelve million more and some change. And that's the same general budget from 2019 and the one we're approving tonight. So no big change there. So where is the change? What's making the difference? And I think this is a change that is representing a value that we are focusing on all the more here in Kalamazoo and it's a value that in some ways only we can act on here in the city and that is that we do operate a water department and wastewater and that is something we do not only for the city, but for our region. So it's our responsibility here, a foundational responsibility for our region, having safe, clean drinking water, having safe disposal. So that is where you're going to see the big change in the numbers, is a very large increase there in the enterprise funds and that increase represents investment in infrastructure. So when you look at those numbers there and you see the difference, almost twenty million more, that is primarily investment in our water infrastructure and our wastewater infrastructure, which is what results in our larger budget. Seen no discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I think it's worth mentioning, just reminding folks as well, that there was four hundred and fifty-five thousand eight thirty that was Foundation for Excellence money and then there was, I think it was a million dollars in water capital improvements, that was not in the original budget that was presented, but that's why it's a little bit higher than the version that we saw in like late November. So the budget, the final budget number is over two hundred and three million dollars, but that's because of a couple of just minor changes that were not reflected in that original thing as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Anyone else? Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes and the fiscal year 2020 budget is adopted. Deputy City Manager, next item, please.
Item G3, adoption of an ordinance amending Article IV Mobile Food Vehicle Vendors, which includes renaming this section Mobile Food Businesses, and adoption of a resolution setting the areas of operation and the fee for mobile food vehicles.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this item? If so, please come to the podium, give your name and whether you live in the city, you'll have four minutes to make your comments. Seen no one. Commissioners, the recommended action is to adopt the ordinance and fee resolution. Is there a motion? Made by Commissioner Knott?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hess. Commissioners, any discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to share.
Commissioner Pradel?
You know, I think it's great that we're making more licenses available to entrepreneurs, lowering the rate to make it more equitable for people who wish to do this work as well, so I'm very supportive of.
Appreciate that. Anyone else? Clerk Borling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Urban?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes. Next are reports and legislation. Deputy City Manager Lamb, do you have a report?
No reports this evening, thank you.
Attorney Robinson?
No, yeah.
Clerk Borling?
No, sir.
All right. Next is the opportunity for general public comments. Anyone wishing to address the city commission on a topic should come to the podium, give your name and whether you live in the city, you have four minutes to make your comments, can be on any topic. Just as a reminder, this is not a time that we interact, this is time for us to hear from you and certainly if something comes up or a question needs to be answered, we will often direct you to staff or try to answer those things afterwards. So thank you.
My name is Ray Sweeney, I live in the city and I want to introduce myself from several points of view. One, I am one of the leaders that, at First United Methodist Church that puts on a meal for those that are food-challenged, although those that have come there, we serve about a hundred every, every week. Those that come, some of us drive, some of us ride bicycles and some of us walk. I'm also very grateful for the very good work that the city did in clearing the roads and so I was out on my drive and greeted the truck coming down my street, fully aware that it was going to push quite a bit of debris onto my drive that I, well, it was good exercise, I got rid of it. But it does suggest some systemic problems in the city that I wanted to reflect on. It comes from discussions we had last Sunday at dinner with, with a number of individuals. Debris that was pushed out on my drive and perhaps you all experienced that in one way or another, is also going out on a lot of the sidewalks, especially downtown area. And so, yes, it is the obligation of the property owner to clear those walks, but it's a little bit of an aggravation, I'm sure, because the city contributes to it because that wash from the truck is frequently thrown onto a sidewalk, which was immediately adjacent to the street. So that's first, is that the city has some responsibility for the issue of, of snow on walks in the, especially the downtown area. The other thing to reflect is that we concentrate virtually everything on these major thoroughfares. So they are major traffic, okay, very heavy trafficked. We have our transit system that also uses those same streets to pick up people who conceivably don't have options for driving or maybe handicapped and then we put all of those services and the like with sidewalks that are very difficult to pass on. And so it just seems to me that the design of the city might anticipate something where we isolate the main traffic with its even flow from where the pedestrians, the transit users are concentrated and you'd have maybe a parallel corridor of pedestrian transit that the city would take on the responsibility of cleaning, that is to say, not a sidewalk so much as a road dedicated for the movement of people and providing services of transit. And it would parallel the system that, where the heavy traffic is located. So that's basically it and, but the other thing that came out of those discussions is there was this awareness of speed. I live on the west main hill and those places, I think some cars come on, off the hill at fifty miles an hour and they essentially make being a pedestrian very difficult. And so it's dark in the winter when this problem is aggravated and, and the speeds just make it more difficult to be pedestrian. So all of those, I think, are worth some study. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Please remember to sign in at, at some point.
Good evening, Devon Loker, I represent the refinery, a provisional center within the city. Congratulations, Mayor, and some new council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. Niles, Buchanan, Battle Creek, Lansing and our sister city Grand Rapids have all already opted in to regulate and tax adult-use cannabis. Yet standing here in the city of Kalamazoo, which overwhelmingly supported Proposition One, I can't find a store. How much tax apportionment are we missing out on? While the unregulated market thrives, we have cannabis in our community with no public revenue stream to fund youth prevention education, public awareness programs and to promote best safety practices for parents. The citizens spoke in favor of legalizing cannabis when they approved Prop One and we enjoy much support from many of our council members. We already have a medical marijuana facilities ordinance. So I'm here tonight to request at a minimum that the city consider an initial opt-in ordinance to allow for currently licensed medical facilities to apply for their equivalency license now. We have, we are happy to engage in the discussions around some of the other licenses that may be addressed by June and for the Downtown Development Authority, I think some temporary events might be in order and such, but please simply allow these existing businesses to move forward and provide this essential service to our community as Prop One of 2018 entails. It's now 2020, this should not have really taken this long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tom Farrell, Kalamazoo resident, my son Tom. We have, I've written to many of you, talked to many of you about our business, we've invested a little over a million dollars in a building and real estate on All Van Road, right behind Denny's on Sprinkle 94 interchange. We appreciate the opportunity that you've given us to open up the medical cannabis facility and we just did that a month ago. It's lots of reasons sales aren't going well, probably first and foremost, we're brand new, you're trying to establish yourself and everything else, but the other provisioning centers, we're hearing the same thing, through tests in the state of Michigan, things have slowed down, they pulled things off the market, some legalized grows can't get enough of the product to the dispensaries, whatever the case may be, but we're watching Ann Arbor just kill it with the recreational and we've just heard talk that you're, you may get it opted in in June, it may wait till June. We're just very concerned as business owners. I don't know how long we can wait, we've put a lot of money into it, we're local, there's no big company behind us and we feel that it's a great thing for Kalamazoo. There's, I think, four provisioning centers that you've allowed in the city. None, I don't think any are here tonight, if they are, maybe they'll speak, but they're waiting for an agenda. I don't have the patience to wait. We'll probably have to lay people off in a couple of weeks, we'd really rather not. We would like to, you know, have a sustainable business if we can and we feel that the recreational opt-in or the adult use would help considerably. There's only, I think, forty-five hundred card-carrying medical patients in the county, there's three hundred thousand individuals, I believe, if my numbers are close, not all of them used, so we're not expecting they're all going to come running, but it certainly opens up a lot more opportunity to the provisioning centers and really are just asking that you please, if you're going to do this, look into it sooner than later. If the township opts in, which they, they're talking, whether or not they do, you probably know better than me, I've heard February, I don't know when Portage is, but we see this as a business owner, if they opt in, people are going to start being accustomed going there, they're going to get their loyalty programs. If we have to wait two or three months after that, we've got to find another way to get people in and it's really...
It'll just be lost revenue on the city, I think that we're going to be missing that opportunity. Battle Creek's already opted in, there's dispensaries or provisioning centers rather over there that offer delivery services who can deliver into our community and we're not going to take the benefit from the tax revenue off of that. I think it's something that's going to be huge for the city and I know we can hire a lot more local residents into our little store here to really kind of boost sales and as the industry evolves. We're happy to help with any draft ordinances or anything we can be available to any of you council members through questions. I know there's a lot of concerns as far as the regulation aspect and that the state of Michigan hasn't finalized the official rules for the adult use. I think a lot of that really lies on us as the operators out there. The changes the state may enact later down the line are really going to affect us the most rather than municipalities.
Or the geography of those, those and who's allowed where and anything else. Right now, everything we're seeing is, it's testing, it changes every day, new test for this, new test for that, different levels for this. We haven't seen any changes at all that would affect...
Our community or any of the municipalities, so...
You know, we would just like to, to see if you could get in sooner than later at all the rest of the community, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Hi.
Hello, good evening, Commissioners, Vice Mayor Griffin, Mayor Anderson, my name is Remy Harrington, I came in December and I was talking about our request to put in an ordinance change for January's agenda. We did have the opportunity to speak... We did have the opportunity to speak to Commissioner Pedal. He was very communicative based on the information that we had submitted to you all, and we were able to work directly with city staff. But we were unable to put forth our request for an ordinance change to allow for all vacant residential, residentially zoned lots of parcels in Kalamazoo to be utilized for the purposes of urban agriculture. However, we are working directly with city staff to continue to draft language through a human-centered design public participation plan that we will be working with. Have been in communications with our MSU liaison, MSU Extension Liaison, and with city staff Pete Eldridge and I. We all had a conversation actually yesterday, and we're looking to try to continue to draft language that can be supportive of leveraging these vacant parcels of property for the purposes of urban agriculture. I just wanted to follow up because I said that I was going to do that, and I'm going to always do what I say I'm going to do. And I also just want to continue to request that you keep your fingers on the pulse of what's happening with this, because I am anticipating that, that we're going to need some visibility for this process, because we're talking about the issue of being able to access land for people that have historically been disenfranchised from being able to purchase parcels of property. And we know that land ownership was the foundations and the bedrock of citizenship in this country, and it has been prohibitive of people being able to participate in the economy as citizens. And so I really, really would like to make sure that my voice in this conversation is not being staunch or that it's being vilified or anything like that, but I'm really trying to push forward an agenda for access and an agenda for equity and an agenda for our vision of shared prosperity in our community. I bring my little daughter. I was very, very proud to see the young ladies and the young kids that were up here today talking about social justice, and I'm just trying to do my due diligence as a mom and as a citizen to make sure that the community that those kids live in is accessible for the dreams that they have for themselves and for all of us to actualize our optimal best. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ryan Simpson. I'm part of a leadership team for Kalamazoo. We're a provisioning center located at 4,500 West KL, here within the city limits. And since our friends over at the refinery covered quite a bit that we would have covered, we'll just echo the same kind of sentiment. And I want to begin really by saying the city administration put a lot of effort and due diligence and time and research into writing the medical ordinance, and we think they did just such a phenomenal job, and the previous commission put a lot of effort into it as well. So we want to say thank you for all of that, and we have every confidence that with this recreation ordinance, the same commission, the same administration will put that amount of thought and care into it as well. So if there's anything that we can be able to do from our side, from industry expertise, we're more than happy to help out in any way that we can. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rachel, and I live in the city of Kalamazoo. I am a user of adult cannabis, and I know that a lot of my friends and peers do as well, and it's just sort of frustrating that we are not able to buy it in our own city of Kalamazoo, especially when conditions are so terrible on the roads. We have to go out and we have to drive to Battle Creek, Ann Arbor, in order to buy it legally. So it would be great if they're, if any of the dispensaries around here were able to sell adult-use cannabis recreationally.
Thank you so much.
My name is Jay Fleming. I am a resident of Kalamazoo and an equity applicant for cannabis businesses for the MRA. I wanted to note my appreciation for Kalamazoo's measured approach to opting into recreational marijuana. One of the things I heard noted is that Grand Rapids has opted in, Grand Rapids has not opted in. In fact, Thursday, their planning commission will be looking at recommendations that have been handed to them from their planning department. So they have not taken that step yet. And I want to note to you some things that came out of conversations around that this week about some of the problems that continue to happen with the MRA, with licensing, and that I think speaks to Kalamazoo's measured approach. Number one, there continues to be a significant shortage of flour on the cannabis market for medical patients. If we move to recreational, more of that, more of that product will move into the recreational market away from the medical market. They can't market them as both, so they're either going to be taxed at a higher price for recreational, or they're going to be medical and they're going to be at a lower prices. These businesses need to make that decision, and they need, need to make the decision about how much they really want to serve the medical community. Number two, one of the things that Grand Rapids is talking about is they are not approaching consumption lounges or temporary event uses. Part of the reason for this is because of their understanding that food and beverage will not be allowed at these places, which is a significant deterrent to anybody who is an operator of one, or just the possibility of having an event and not being able to get an answer from the MRA of, will you be able to serve water at these? You can't get that answer from the MRA. I, I talked to them today on the phone. Their response is that food and beverage is not their licensing area, that those licensing issues must go to M-DART. And if you ask them if M-DART approves this, can you get a marijuana license with this approval? Their response is, we can't tell you hypotheticals. I was literally told by someone from the MRA, we cannot interpret our own rules and the conflicts in them. We suggest you seek a lawyer's advice. So on top of that, the supervisor that I ended up talking to told me to go back to M-DART and say, talk to your county and their food safety and talk to M-DART about that. Can you guess what M-DART's response was? Licensing of marijuana is a single-use license, so we're not here to speak on that. We can't speak on marijuana licensing at all. We, we submit that any food, beverage, service-type thing that falls under a marijuana consumption lounge is the zone of the MRA and LARA. So we currently have interactions between two of our governmental bodies that, that basically couldn't be a better satire for bureaucracy not working and the fact that, and asked specifically, is there any protocol for M-DART and the MRA to have these conversations with each other, to, to come up to an agreement with that? And there's currently no protocol for that whatsoever. There's no liaising happening between the two. It is just literally like you have to do something like, say, I'm going to open a business over here and a business right next to each other, and they have to be separate businesses with separate licenses, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that Kalamazoo's approach to marijuana, recreational marijuana, adult-use marijuana as the slow approach is the smart approach. We can't, it's very, very hard to undo anything that you do, and I think especially when we look at issues with equity, issues with smaller licenses that people can get into, and the issue, the real issue of access to medical cannabis in our, in our region, that you guys are doing the right thing, and I thank you very much for holding ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? At this time, we'll hear from Commissioners who wish to make comments. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? Commissioner Knott?
Thank you. Looked to just take a minute to build off of the first gentleman that we heard from tonight as it relates to snow. Perhaps my colleagues up on the dais have heard from moms around Maple Middle School. Messages came in over the last couple of days. But the, the talking points are there are businesses and institutions around Maple Middle, Middle School. The borders are across town in Howard. It's a fairly complicated intersection for Commissioners that weren't part of this commission. I think it was back in 2016, moms of the Vine neighborhood had asked for a crosswalk to go in from Merrill to Howard, and our traffic engineer said, no, that's not possible without a lengthy study. There's a crosswalk at Crosstown, and we all know what middle school behavior is like, right? We're not going to walk to Crosstown from Merrill, we're just going to dart across Howard Street. So what it ultimately took was public safety saying this is a very unsafe situation, and we got a crosswalk, and now there's a sign, and it blinks, and it tells drivers to slow down. So the correspondence that I've been receiving since the most recent snow, and again, without singling out businesses or institutions that are around Howard and Crosstown, is these businesses are paying for snow plows to remove snow from their driveways, but they're not doing anything with their sidewalks. And they have observed ma, or excuse me, students walking in the roads around Crosstown and Howard trying to get to school because the sidewalks aren't plowed. And when phone calls were made, it was reported that businesses, institutions, et cetera, have 48 hours to clear their sidewalks. And so I guess I'm, I'm asking, I understand bureaucracy, I understand process, but we got a, we got a, a crosswalk a couple of years ago when we were told it needed a study. What can we do to, I don't know, twist the arms of these businesses to say, listen, we got kids that are walking from the Weston Hill neighborhood and they're in the street. You're paying a plow company to move snow out of your driveway. And to the gentleman's point, perhaps some of that snow is coming back up from our plow trucks. So 48, 48 hours isn't acceptable. That's two days of kids walking either on Howard or Crosstown Parkway, and we all know that it's, that's a very busy intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Knott. Anyone else? Commissioner Pedal?
Yeah. I was just going to echo what Commissioner Knott was saying as well. I was, made a note to myself to, to bring this up as well. I mean, let's be honest with ourselves, it's bad business for two reasons. Number one, if somebody's injured or, or killed, that's one less person that's doing business with you. But let's not forget about the fact that it's the right humane thing to do for people who have no choice but to walk, to get around, and those with mobility issues as well. I cringe every single time that I see somebody walking in the road and think that it required somebody's action to clear that sidewalk. Wanted to acknowledge somebody I met actually at the MLK Day of Service, a gentleman named Jerry who lives on East Cork, takes it upon himself to take his snowblower and snowblow quite a significant chunk of East Cork, and does so for neighbors who need to get around. I think that's a good lesson for everybody as well, that if you live on a block where people are at risk of walking in a very dangerous street, if you are able-bodied to do so, please do so. Be the Jerry on your street. And, you know, if we all just chip in a little bit, I asked Jerry, I said, you know, why do you do this? And he said, well, I'm retired, he said, but I recognize the fact that, you know, it's not going to be long before I'm going to need somebody to help me. So I'd love if we could all kind of keep that spirit in our community of helping each other out, and certainly our businesses if we can try to keep our walks clear. That would be greatly appreciated. Second thing, kept my promise to Susan Hoffman's 30-40 political science class. I promised them that I was going to bring a mug that they gave me to the commission today, and I had an opportunity to teach them about the city manager, former government this last week at Western Michigan University. So I just wanted to give them a shout out and thank them for the opportunity to get them nerding out about local government. And other than that, thank you for everybody who volunteered and showed up for MLK's Day of Service. So, thank you.
Thank you. Christian Urban?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Anderson. I, I too want to comment on Mr. Sweeney's suggestions to us regarding snow removal and difficulty with sidewalks, different problems with speed of automobiles. We're seeing more and more people address the city about this. But we have in Kalamazoo a car culture. It's not a, it's not a pedestrian culture. And Mr. Sweeney's coming to us gives us an opportunity to listen to the increased cries for recognizing that pedestrians need to have safe passage in the public ways as well, pedestrians and bicyclists. And so his suggestion of having a, a dedicated pathway for bicyclists and pedestrians, dedicated roadway for them even, sounds so extreme, but to think that that's being provided for, for vehicles, is it so strange to propose that we have dedicated roadways for safe, for safe reasons for the other users of the public right-of-way? So I just thank him for bringing that to our attention, and I welcome others to keep on doing that, because we're trying to change our culture here. It won't happen suddenly, and it's going to be painful. A lot of people have habits that they want to keep. Going down West Main Hill at 50 miles an hour is a habit many people have. Somebody's going to get killed one day, and then we'll all say we, we're warned. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Urban. Commissioner Cunningham?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to speak to those who brought up the medical marijuana and the marijuana industry here, the policy. As far as the city, you know, we have opted into a delayed response, or we have took in a delayed response to the opt-in, not necessarily as, and I can't necessarily speak for everybody on the dais, but not that we don't believe that it's something that shouldn't move forward. I think that we all vocalize and, and express the need for expediency and even brought up the need for, you know, if we needed additional help to make sure that we, we put in the appropriate funds to do so. But the main thing that, that we're really trying to iron out is what this will look like geographically for us in our community and how that impacts us as we move forward. So, so I, I want to, you know, reinforce that our city continues to act in that, in that component with that thought at least from my point of view. But what I also wanted to say is that in regards to the equity component, I am highly interested in the makeup of what this potential policy could be. And so if any of you are intrigued or would like to give thought towards that, please reach out to me, cunninghame@kalamazoo-city.org. Once again, cunninghame@kalamazoo-city.org. Once again, please reach out to me as that is really something that I'm interested in before we roll into this opportunity is to make sure that we're dotting our i and crossing our t in regards to how this could impact our, those who are less fortunate in the community.
Thank you, Commissioner Cunningham. Anyone else? Commissioner Hess?
I do. In, in the spirit of service and actually inspiration, I, I leave tonight inspired from these young people in our community who have done so much work on behalf of their fellow citizens and the environment and social justice. It's been a busy week. I've attended the Environmental Committee, Environmental Concerns Committee. I've talked, I've gone to the Western Michigan Climate Change. I have attended the Women's March, MLK events, and today's Truth and Racial Healing and Transformation Circle. And I believe through all of this that we're doing amazing work in Kalamazoo. As, as I attended and listened to some speakers yesterday at the MLK events, two quotes really stuck out to me. Number one, he gave his life. We give a day. And the other one is, was from Kalamazoo College's convocation and Speaker Barbara Ensby, and she said, dead men make convenient heroes. It's easy to recognize him and not continue to live his spirit. And so as, in the spirit of the man and the spirit of perseverance and coming forward and doing something over a long period of time, I would like to recognize someone who's very near and dear to my heart, and that's my husband, Jim. Some of you may know him, but in the spirit of MLK and connecting to the school that is named for MLK, because every, as we hear at the convocation, every town has one. Jim has very silently and quietly gone about the business over 27 years of establishing a group called The Breakfast of Champions. And The Breakfast of Champions is a group of 12 young men that, that are selected by the school, a very diverse group of young men who meet every other week and receive positive messages from, from community members and a diverse amount of men throughout the year. So over those 27 years with 12 youth, grades six and then five when the schools changed, he has impacted over 324 lives. And from personal testimonials from those children and from now those young men and fathers, what he has done made a difference in their life. So it is our perseverance and our continual outreach over time that affects great change. And I would encourage us in the spirit of MLK to do something that is in the spirit of Jerry, if, even if it's clearing someone else's walk, but to reach out and to be kind. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Christian. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I want to echo some of the sentiments of my fellow Commissioners. Thank you, Ray, for making that point, and hopefully we'll take care of that. And to the folks who did speak about the marijuana, a few of you have emailed me and I've, we've emailed back and forth, but I forwarded your information on to city staff, and they'll be in contact with- and they'll be in contact with you as we get ready to have conversations about this. And I do agree, we may have been more reactive than proactive in, in kind of pushing through, but it's very, very important that equity just not be a word. Because if we move through things quickly, then we will continue to miss the mark. When we did vote on that, when former Mayor Hopewell was up here, he voiced that every time we have a conversation or people come to speak to us about the business of marijuana, there's never any people of color, ever. That's a problem when we know that disproportionately people of color have been affected by that. So it's our job to make sure that gets done right. I don't want to stop anyone's business. I won't speak for anyone else, but I don't know that anybody wants to interfere with anyone's business. As a community, we support recreational marijuana. We absolutely support what people voted in, but we have to do this right. And, and so hopefully we get those conversations sooner than later. That doesn't mean that it absolutely has to take till June, even though that is what we said, but, so I just want to reiterate that. I know sometimes when, when media portrays things, it doesn't all, if we don't have that specific equity, then it makes it seem like, oh, you know, we're not interested and we're just going to push this off. But that's, that's not what this is here. So I just definitely wanted to make that point, especially as Commissioner Haas lifted up as far as the different things that have been going on. Today is the National Day of Racial Healing, Martin Luther King. If we don't live this work every day, then it will just become about days of service and days of honoring people. And we need a lifetime change. And so that is where we're able to affect that work. So I just really wanted to say that here. Again, I wanted to congratulate all of the youth that were here and lift up their villages because that's amazing. It's just incredible to see the amazing talent that we have here in this community and the people who actually care for the community. And I just want to lastly say, we lost, as it was mentioned here earlier, we lost an incredible member of our community, Moses Walker, who's a former Commissioner who fought very hard for equity and for rights of people. And so just in honor of the work that he did, in the honor of Dr. King, hopefully we can continue to live that legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Griffin. As we close this tonight, I also want to recognize, recognize a few things. Starting off with the fact that the city of Kalamazoo does participate in a day on, not a day off, and that occurs on the recognition day for Dr. Martin Luther King. Dr. Martin Luther King, who was shot and killed 52 years ago on a balcony in Memphis, Tennessee. Fifteen years after that, Ronald Reagan signed the legislative action so that it became a nationally recognized holiday in 1983. And then in 1994, President Clinton signed something special that makes it more unique. It is recognized as a national day of service, not just a national holiday. And there was only one other national day of service that's recognized. And when I got to spend time with, with many people who I see doing the work every day around the community and we have this one day when we spend some time together, I think of this as a moment of recognition and rejuvenation and a kickoff for another year when a year later we can come back and we can ask ourselves, what have we accomplished in the previous year? It's a reminder, it's a time to share important moments with people in the community that do this work, but also to really just be the day we start doing this year's work. And I think it's appropriate that the Vice Mayor Griffin read the proclamation for today, the National Day of Healing. And I also want to recognize a local icon, who is Moses Walker. Moses Walker served as a city Commissioner some years ago. He was someone who was well-known around the community, volunteering on boards right up until the end, actually. Served on the Board of Integrated Services of Kalamazoo, a public mental health agency where I work. There will be a visitation, I believe, with the family this coming Friday. Commissioner Cunningham, Commissioner Griffin, I'm not sure if you have had more information on that. I believe it starts at 5:30 and I host at Stone's Church. And then there will be a service on this Saturday and I believe that's at 11:00. To recognize the fact, to memorialize the fact that Moses Walker did serve on the Kalamazoo City Commission, it is our practice to, to fly our flag at half-staff on the day of the funeral, so that will be happening on Saturday. I want to publicly send our condolences, our heartfelt wishes from the commission to the family, to everyone in Kalamazoo, friends as well, who are experiencing the grief of the loss of Mr. Walker here in town. And lastly, I'd like to end by just reading a quote. I always think about how we're going to end these meetings and what is crossing my vision here is about what I want to say at the end and I was delivered a quote tonight and I think I'll reiterate that, that came from Princess Moop, who we recognize tonight. And she said, "We all become better human beings as well as more educated and wiser when we experience different cultures. With education comes power and since knowledge accompanies diversity. Diversity is power." We are adjourned.